Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the May 22nd, 2025 Audit Committee to order. Before we get started, we'd like to ask our interpreter to introduce themselves and walk through the how to access our interpretation service for today's meeting. Interpreter, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Announcement from the interpreter. To use interpretational feature, please scroll to the bottom of the Zoom screen where the meeting controls are. Click on the interpretation icon, row, and select English as your language. If you're journeying through the Zoom mobile app, cell phone, tablet, et cetera, please press ellipsis, then interpretation, and then choose your language. Finally, click on mute original audio to not hear the original Spanish low in the background. Headset are available for interpretation. If you're in the meeting room, please check out a headset from the receptionist in the lobby. Aviso por parte del intérprete. Para hacer uso del servicio de interpretación, favor desplazarse a la parte inferior de la pantalla de Zoom, donde aparecen los controles. Haga clic en el icono de interpretación, globo terráqueo, y seleccione Spanish, español. Si está utilizando la aplicación móvil de Zoom, celular, tableta, etc., presione los puntos suspensivos, luego Interpretation, y luego el idioma. Si no desea escuchar el audio original en inglés en el fondo, favor de seleccionar mute original audio, silenciar audio original. Contamos con auriculares disponibles para el servicio de interpretación. Si se encuentra en la sala reunión, favor de pedir auriculares con la recepcionista en los títulos. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the land that we call home. The tribal nations of the San Diego region have historically faced injustices. We acknowledge the harmony that existed between the land, nature, and its original peoples who have since endured displacement, persecution, and systemic oppression. We pay our respect to the unceded territory and the homelands of the 18 tribal nations in our region, the most in any county in the United States, from our four cultural groups, the Kumai de Guayna, the Luceno, the Copeno, and the Coila. This land is nourished, healed, and protected, and embraced them for many generations in a relationship of balance and harmony. As members of the Sandag community, we acknowledge this legacy. We aspire to learn from indigenous traditional knowledge and experiences in undoing the injustices of the past. At this time, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Clerk, can you confirm that we have a quorum?
Thank you, Chair. We do have a quorum with one voting member absent today.
Wonderful. Do we have any public comments this afternoon?
I do see one hand from the public. The person with the phone number ending in 731, you can go ahead.
Hey, it's truth. I did say last night that I was not going to participate in this meeting. I'm going back on my word, oh no. But I decided, you know what, I do have something to say. I have a critique, and that is, I don't think the Audit Committee should be the day before the Board of Directors' meeting. Because, one, someone who wants to participate in both, especially if it's really important like today's Audit Committee, I would have to read at least two different agendas. Let's say I wanted to do Borders. That would be three agendas. I haven't even looked at the Borders agenda. Let's just say it's 20 pages. That would be pretty nice. But if I add up BOD and Audit, I think that's probably 800 or more pages. So if you add another 20, I don't know, 900 we'll say. That's crazy. There's no way that anyone could read 900 pages in, we'll say, a week, which, even if you give a week, which is great, that kind of gives a week to read an agenda. I don't have a full week to read agendas, so that's not realistic. I understand that that's a special meeting, and so things happen, but almost feels like a conspiracy. And I know Hassan, remember Hassan, that corrupt guy, which is why this Audit Committee has so much business today? He's the one that was calling everything a conspiracy. And if you question it, you're a conspiracy theorist. I very much remember watching those meetings. You've got to know the past to understand the present. But thank you, guys, that are fighting corruption. I appreciate that. So I will be listening today. And if I'm mad enough, maybe I'll comment more. So, thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. That concludes the public comments.
Wonderful. Thank you. Do we have any member comments that are on agenda items at this point? No, seeing none. Let's go ahead and go to item number two, an update from the Office of the Independent Auditor. Are there Ruby?
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm Courtney Ruby. I'm the independent performance auditor. There's a lot going on. But first, I am just honored to introduce my staff to you today. We realize that there's been some changes in membership, and we haven't done this. And then we've had some exciting changes in our staff as well. So first, I'd like to introduce you to Michelle Ludwig. Now, you did meet her a couple of times ago. But she comes to you today as the Acting Deputy Independent Performance Auditor. So she became acting on Monday. Lloyd Carter, the previous deputy IPA, retired last Friday. And I just want to acknowledge all his service to this agency, that he was really one of the founding members of OIPA. And so as I stand on that foundation, and now I am so honored to have Michelle join me as a deputy IPA. I want to tell you a little bit about Michelle. So Michelle has over 20 years of experience in external and internal auditing. So she comes from both private as well as governmental. She has experience in financial, operational IT, and compliance audits. She's a past president and past vice president of San Diego Institute of Internal Auditors, as well as a current board member. She brings a wealth of knowledge, passion, and expertise to this role. So I am honored that she will be beside me as we continue to bring you all this important work. I also want to introduce the rest of the members, but I'm going to start off with another new staff member, Deshary Samuel. Hi, you want to stand up, Deshary? Deshary is a Southern California native. She moved from Long Beach. She's a Sacramento State graduate with a background in economics and business. She has over seven years of state and local government knotted experience, and she comes to us from LA Metro, where she performed grant and performance audits. Okay, now I am going to go back to some of the old timers. Now, one of our newest old timers is Emily Mullen, who you see here at the dais. She is the Associate Administrative Analyst, and really keeps us all focused and moving forward. Next is Doug DePete. He has been here several years. He is the principal independent auditor, as well as whistleblower manager. So he does both audits and investigations. Michael Ryan is next to him. Michael is an associate independent auditor and has been here five years. So the longest one of this group. Okay, so thank you for allowing me that time to introduce the team to you. Now I'll tell you what we've been up to. We returned a couple of weeks ago from our National Association, Association of Local Government Auditors Conference in Minnesota this year. And we received a lot of knowledge. We work with our peers in relation to other great audits that are going out throughout the country. We really share ideas and form those relationships that help us then to call upon one another and bring the best practices and best ideas forward. And Shauna was there, too. We currently have underway an audit of HNTB, and I know that we anticipate that coming out this summer, and that that has been queued up for a while. So I know that members are interested in seeing that. We have the current risk assessment going on, so I will be proposing the annual work plan this July to you all. We are preparing an internal controls training for management, so that will go to anybody who is responsible for managing a process when the agency will have an opportunity to do that. And that was part of the annual work plan revisions that we did. We said, we're not going to do an internal control assessment right now. We're going to start first to go and provide a training on internal controls. So we're going to start with risk assessment, then we're going to talk about internal controls, flow mapping, and then we're also going to work independently with the process owners to look at their maps and help to kind of just cement some of those processes in place and support where we can. I think that is my update, Chair.
Thanks. It's great to hear and to meet the team. And we obviously see the hard work that's been going on, but it's nice to hear you had some time away to go to the conference and enjoy each other's company and meet the colleagues. I think that's what these conferences provide. And it's always nice to have that opportunity. So thanks for the update. Sure appreciate that. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
I think we have some member comments, Chair.
Thank you very much, Chair. Welcome to everybody. I know that I have seen several of you on staff at some of previous meetings. I'm very happy to formally meet you and write down your names. And I look forward to many more of the reports. I've said before, auditors are amongst my favorite people, so I'm very excited to be a part of this committee and work with you all. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Any other comments? No? All right. We're going to move on to item three, approval of the February 7th, 2025 meeting. Do we have any public comments?
Thank you, Chair. We have no public comments.
Okay. Any shared comments? No. Do I have a motion in a second?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Oh, I'll second that, and then we'll go ahead and vote.
That motion passes unanimously with those members present.
Thank you. I missed something. Obviously, being a new chair, I missed a few things, not as smooth as the previous chair. So I want to turn some time over to our CEO, Mario So, for an update.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to everybody. And unfortunately, I do have a longer update than than independent auditor, but we'll go with it. You know, first of all, some of you are aware, we, the board, approved the $1.3 billion budget for the next fiscal year. We also had a, that is the beginning of a conversation, that it was also checked and validated in the board retreat, where we're going to be coming through the year with a priority discussion that may require or will require budget amendments. And this is all based on, you know, what we can achieve with what we have, our estimates, and also understanding the realities of the formula funds, of how they're materializing based on decisions being made in Sacramento and Washington. Also wanted to report that we had mentioned a while ago, there had been an IRS audit that was in place for our Sandax 2010 Built America bonds. The audit was concluded, and there was no recommendation. This is what my team calls a clean audit. So we're very happy of that. So that's a very good thing. Regarding projects, our back office system, as we've been mentioning, we are doing the validation and the transfer of data. We have identified with the vendors that there will be some delays on the delivery of the back office. We have asked our project management team and the vendors to give us a worst and a base case scenario, so we can report to the different policy advisory committees and to the board on those best and worst case scenarios. But I think the important thing to highlight is, this is what needs to happen to get a good system online. We need to be doing the checks. We need to be doing the validation. As has been mentioned, it did not have a systems requirement when it got contracted. So it's kind of like developing a system, changing the tires, and driving the car at the same time. So it's good, but we are encountering potential delays on the back office system. This past week, or this week, I was in Houston with our counterparts from the NPO. We saw how they're doing their managed lane systems, but also how they're doing their planning and different endeavors. And like you said, Chair, it's always learning to get refreshed and learn from others, right? Or figure out that we're having the same challenges also. On the loss and realignment, the notice of preparation for the new realignment project went out. It's going to have a 45-day comment period, and we will be having a in-person meeting on May 26 in the Delmar Fairgrounds at 6:00 PM. In that token, also this last Monday, Caltrans released the draft environmental document for the I-15 SR78 managed lane collector. This is a partnership project. Caltrans is the lead agency. Sandak is a sponsoring agency. This is a big milestone, and we can't close our eyes on the emergence of development in San Marcos around the San Marco State University area. Also tomorrow, another big product is going to come out. Our regional plan, our draft 2025 regional plan, will be released tomorrow, and it will have a 55-day comment period. It will be open through July 18. I think the big part of it is, we are achieving the 19% emission reductions. It's a much smaller regional plan. The cost of it is about $126 billion. Again, is that balancing a projection revenues and how much we can spend? I've been mentioning to the board and other policy advisory committees that there was a project that was done several years ago, El Bayra to Morena, loss and alignment double-track project. We will probably be mobilizing an emergency stabilization work to address some slippage in a retaining wall. As we have more information, we will be conveying that. But the idea is to do the stabilization work as soon as possible. And we are working with North County Transit and MTS to assess how that line is functioning, when they feel it's adequate to continued service or not continued service. So that's being monitored. Also, there was Bike Anywhere Day last week. There were more than 10,000 pit stops visits, and there was 11% higher participation than last year. So it was a great, great success, this program. I also want to update you on several other things. We have been hearing, you know, on the Tijuana River issue, EPA has announced that they're going to be expediting portions of their project with a capacity of maybe processing 10 million gallons of additional switch within the next 100 days. So that's great, and everybody's moving forward with their commitments. And it's a long journey to get to the solution. Our part here, we had launched the Calibaja resilience plan. We had the kickoff. This is kind of a border master plan in climate action and environmental actions, because we should not just be looking at what's going to happen, just fixing the problem. We need to fix the problem. That's the most immediate thing. But we also need to be thinking how we're going to avoid getting into the same situation. How do we keep growing, or not growing, but in a responsible way? So this is being done. And finally, I want to just let you know that our offices and customer service will be closed on Monday 26 for Memorial Day. That concludes my update.
Appreciate that, CEO. Francesca, do we have any public comments?
No, Chair, we don't.
Any member comments?
I just want to thank Mario for giving a very high-level overview of what's going on with Sandak, because sometimes this committee, we just focus on very small issue. So it's really nice to have this broader context of what's going on. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I agree. It's always nice to hear a little bit more thorough. I did have one question, Mario, in regards to the back office system. You mentioned some delays.
Yes.
How long are the delays? Because, you know, I think from the board members and members of Sandak who hear about this often, you hear delay. You don't worry, because you know how intensive the work is. But I think sometimes the public, they like to create their own scenario why there are delays. What's the timeline look? I know it may be unknown, but perhaps a ballpark.
We have asked the team to come out with a worst-than-best-case scenario. I would say that right now, we were planning to go live this fall, and it's probably going to be this winter. So it's several months of delay that we're looking into it. The vendor has taken responsibility of those delays. But right now, the next step is to be able to have that range of dates, so we can come back to the board and give it to the board that range. It's going to be multiple months of delay to get it live. And that's going to require us also to extend contracts with the existing vendors. So it's not just a delay, but it's the domino effect that that brings to the effort. So we are preparing a briefing for the board, and once we have all the moving pieces corralled, so we can provide a good, robust information package, we will bring it to you guys. But right now, it's several months, and I would be speculating giving you a number right now.
No, that's fine. I understand. It's also my understanding that some of the problems of the past with collection controls, I think that the agency is very aware of, and have put other smaller controls in place so that we don't end up where we were. Is that correct?
Well, one of the challenges was that there was, similar to the ERP, there was no concept of operations develop when the system was sole source. And this kind of goes in line a little bit with the presentation that OIPA would be doing. So a lesson learned is, you know, we need to avoid doing that when it possible. So the team has been working with the Lloyd and A2B on all the systems requirements. We are there. Now the data migration, the moving huge amounts of data from one system to another and make them click and work, as well as the and make them click and work, as well as the challenges that are being presented. I'm making, there's a slur of vendors around that there's a license plate vendor who reads the license plates. There's a vendor who sends to the DMB what needs to be charged there. Now it's interconnecting all those systems. So we're doing systems connections and tests and that's where we're finding glitches. Nothing surmountable, but it takes time.
Thank you for the additional information. We're going to go ahead and move on to item four. It's an informational item only. It's going to report on the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Finance Report and other financial audits. And we have Ms. Kimberly Trammell from Sandec and Jennifer Farr from Davis Farr. I'll turn the time over to you.
Great. Good afternoon, committee. I am happy to be here today to share the results of our financial statements and audit for the fiscal year that ended June 30, 2024 as Sandec's Director of Accounting and Finance. And before we get into it, I just actually wanted to take a moment at the beginning to thank the accounting and finance team. There are a lot of hard work and effort goes into this process every year and you'll see from some later slides that it is a long process. There's a lot involved and they put their heart and soul into it, the whole team. I've got a couple of the group behind me here. So I just want to say thank you and we greatly appreciate all of their efforts. And with that, I will turn it over to our Jennifer Farr from our independent certified audit firm, Davis Farr.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Farr and I am an audit partner responsible for your audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. And I have a short presentation to walk you through the required auditor communications and to summarize the results of the audit. I just like to start off first with the scope of the audit to clarify that our audit engagement includes both the financial statement audit and also compliance auditing and agreed upon procedures. So we perform a financial statement audit for Sandec and each of its component units. And in addition, a fund of Sandec, which is the South Bay Expressway, has separate financial statements. And then as part of our engagement, we also perform compliance audits on TDA and Transnet recipients, which we will not be covering in today's presentation, the single audit of federal awards and then some agreed upon procedures engagements. Regarding the, how the audit went this year in terms of timing, we began our preliminary procedures in July 2024, which is pretty normal timing for starting off the planning stage of the audit. And then we were originally scheduled to begin the audit a little later than normal, but still within a reasonable timeframe on November 4 of 2024. Staff had communicated to us that they needed some extra time to close the books and this is primarily due to the implementation of the new ERP system as that closing process changed and a lot of the internal controls and work that needed to be done to close the books was entirely a new process under the new system. So we agreed to delay the audit and we ultimately received the trial balance, which is kind of the starting point of the audit on January 3 of 2025. I did want to point out that there was some additional pressure put on the audit firm this year because of the timing of when we started the audit, but also there were some delays in receiving the requested audit items. And I'll give you an example for capital assets. We did not get the support and schedules to start our auditing until mid-February. So with the hard deadline of March 31, it puts some unnecessary pressure on the audit firm. And I only mention it because it creates an opportunity for audit failure when auditors don't have enough time to look through everything in a, in a manner which allows us the ability to ask lots of questions and have adequate follow-up. But we were able to work very closely with the Sandec finance team. Everyone was very committed to getting the audit process completed and we were satisfied with the documentation that we received and were actually able to finalize the audit by our March 31 deadline. And so I think that was something that both my audit team and the team here should be proud of considering the, the start date and the lateness of the audit. Wanted to loop you back to the beginning of this process when we met with this committee to go over the auditor's risk assessment. And these are areas that we believe have additional risk on top of a normal audit. So we have our normal audit procedures and then in these four areas performed additional testing for this fiscal year. And I'm going to go into each of these items. So for now, this is the four items here will have additional slides on. But just, just as a reminder, these are auditor identified risk areas to spend additional time in this year. And I always, also wanted to communicate that each year during the audit, we're required to do an unpredictability test. And this is something that is not normal, not a normal part of our audit procedures. This year, we decided to do confirmations of significant receivable balances with other governments. It's not something we do every year because sending an audit confirmation to another government sometimes is, is challenging to get a, get a response from them. So we sent confirmations of the receivable balances to Caltrans, NCTD, the City of San Diego and the State of California. And that helped give us additional assurance that those receivables are recorded correctly and the revenue cutoff was correct as well. Well, I did want to point out that we had some difficulty in reconciling the Caltrans receivable and that's due primarily to the timing of invoicing Caltrans and obviously the, the complexity and the number of invoices to Caltrans. So we were looking at sending a confirmation six months after the fiscal year end. And in some cases, the, the bill had not been prepared and sent to Caltrans. So they were unable to confirm that the receivable was correct. And it's, there's a lot of reasons for that, largely due to the complexity of the projects that they're working on. But definitely an area where we would like to see some improvements in the timeliness of billing and also maybe communication with Caltrans. So both agencies should agree that a receivable on one agency's books is exactly the same as a payable on another agency's books. So going back into those four areas, I wanted to give you feedback on what we found when we did our testing in those four areas. The first was the implementation of the ERP system. We reviewed the account mapping between the old system and the new system and also that process of moving the beginning or the ending balances from one system into the new system and felt that that was adequately documented and easy to follow. We also evaluated all of the key internal control cycles in the new system because although the policies might be the same on internal controls, the way a new system is going to support those controls is going to be different. So it involved some additional testing and evaluation in the new system on the internal controls. And then we also had our Certified Information Systems Auditor work with your IT team or the Sandec IT team to look at the new system and how it interacts with the, the larger network in terms of security and cybersecurity and whether or not there was any recommendations or deficiencies there. At the end, I'll, I'll have a slide going over recommendations for each of these areas. The second issue that was identified as a risk area during the audit was the, the toll road revenues. And in the financial statements, you'll find that we continue to have a, a modified audit opinion related to the toll revenues. During the year, we carefully evaluated whether or not all of the steps had occurred in order to remove that qualification. And we, we actually got pretty close, closer than I thought we were going to. And it gives me a lot of hope for next year and the possibility to be able to remove that modification next year. So we found that Sandec had developed workarounds over monitoring the E10 Fastlane system and that those workarounds were able to quickly detect when the system was down or whether there was a problem being created. And then those workarounds were able to get the accounting system correct. During the year, there was also some cleanup of past customer account balances and delinquent accounts. And this is all related to the, the implementation of the new back office system kind of drove this process. But because of the, the number of write-offs, it was difficult for us to determine whether those write-offs related to an error that existed at the beginning of the fiscal year or if it was something that happened during the year. So we had difficulties determining the cutoff of revenue of what's in the year we were auditing versus the prior year. And I'm just giving you that information to explain why we couldn't get comfortable with the revenue for this year. But in better news, we were able to audit the customer balances at June 30, 2024. So from a balance sheet standpoint, we're very comfortable that there are no material errors in the, in the financial statements. And that gives us an opportunity to be able to possibly remove that modification next year because we have a good starting point and we feel comfortable with the cutoffs at June 30, 2024. The next area that was an area of heightened risk or audit focus this year is the new debt transactions. There was a very complicated debt issuance during the year, the 2023 Series A Bonds. It refunded the 2008 Series A, B, C, and D Bonds and also the 2019 Series A Bonds. And part of that refunding included termination of an interest rate swap. So each one of those things, very complicated together, extremely complicated. And I thought the Sandec team actually did a really great job in recording the transaction and had actually identified all of the correct entries. The problem is when we got out to do the audit, we found that even though the calculations were all correct, there was a part of it that actually didn't get recorded in the accounting system. So the, the spreadsheets and all the calculations were correct and 95% of the journal entry got entered correctly. But there was still a $6.5 million difference that was related to the interest rate swap termination. And it was a gain-loss on the refunding that was not recorded. And so we were able to identify that and, and have that adjustment made during the year. And then the last of the four items is the single audit of federal awards, which is just higher risk because compliance with federal grant programs is naturally going to be a higher risk area. The total federal awards during the year were 300.6 million and we were required to test two programs that covered 80% of the total federal expenditures. That was the passenger rail program and the federal transit cluster. We did, did have a recommendation on the passenger rail program that I'll get into on the next slide. But I did want to let you know that last year, we had a finding on Sandec's ability to accurately present the schedule of expenditures of federal awards and we did not have that same issue this year and we were able to resolve that finding. So getting to the last piece of information I'll share with you is our internal control recommendations. Starting with adjustments detected during the audit. This is a repeat finding from the prior year. I did want to point out that there was a significant improvement in the number of auditor detected journal entries this year. In fact, we only had four auditor detected journal entries. Unfortunately, three of them were material, so that makes this a material weakness. But there was definitely an effort on staff's side to review documentation before it was given to us and they were able to detect and correct errors before giving us the trial balance. So that really limited the number of adjustments that we had. In those, in those audit adjustments, I had mentioned previously the $6.5 million adjustment to correct the recording of the new debt. And then the other two material adjustments were related to accounting for some capital asset transactions. For the single audit, we did have a finding, a compliance finding related to the passenger rail grant and it, and it has to do with the quarterly reporting that is required under that grant. Two of the, two of the four quarters were not filed within a timely manner. And so that is a compliance finding that we had to include in your report. And then we also had a couple best practice recommendations. These are issues that we technically did not need to put in writing, but we felt just from a full transparency standpoint, it would be better to communicate other observations that we had so Sandec could continue to improve their processes. The first one is related to the trial balance, the differences between the trial balance and the financial reporting. Ideally, you want your trial balance to exactly support the presentation of how the financial statements are, are showing up. In, in Sandec's case, there are some manual modifications that have to be done to change the presentation from the trial balance into how it's presented in the financial statements. And in some case, take one account and split it up into multiple accounts in the financial statement. So we, we would like to see your trial balance line up exactly with how it is presented in the financial statements. And that way, we're not relying on someone's memory of how we got to point A to point B and also really cuts down on human error when we're not having to make those manual adjustments. And then secondly, as a result of our Certified Information Systems Auditor testing, there was a recommendation about reviewing service level agreements for third-party vendors. So when you hire a third-party vendor to provide an IT-related service, it's looking back at that contract and saying, are they doing what they said they were going to do? Instead of just hiring them and letting them provide their service, it's really holding them accountable to make sure that those services are, are being done to the, the level that they originally had told you they would do during the, the contract and agreement. So that concludes my recommend, or recommendations and summary of the audit results. And I'm going to turn it back over to Sandec staff to discuss some additional information with you.
I had to make sure that was going to pop up. So I, I wanted to just spend some time talking about how we're addressing some of the items that were brought up through this audit. And I, I really think, I, I think we need to kind of set the stage. This was a, what I would call a very challenging fiscal year for Sandec. And so I did just put this chart together to, to kind of go over some of the things that were going on as they were going on that we aren't likely to see in future years that are part of the timeliness of the audit. So as many of you know, a fiscal year is going to start in July. And so this one was July 2023. We halfway through the year went live with our new ERP system, as Jennifer mentioned. So we had half the year in one system and half the year in the other system. And so we really at year end had to go through and take all the data that was in the old system, all the data in the new system at a transaction level. We, we put those together just really so we could analyze and, and find, make sure that we had accounted for everything. So it did add a, a different level of, of workload to this process that we wouldn't normally have. I also want to point out that we released the 23 audit late. And so that puts staff a little bit behind on the current fiscal year. And so that's, we're going to have a similar situation going into the next cycle. So that's something that we really take the time once we've completed one audit to, to make sure that we're catching up on the year-to-date items. And then another key thing, Jennifer mentioned the capital asset schedule. We actually implemented our capital asset module, which was part of the new ERP system after the system went live. So we implemented that in the fall. And, you know, are learning a new system as you put that in. So we did see some delays in the capital asset side because of that late implementation. But I think it's also something I'll mention later that will help with our internal controls going forward, having all of that in one system. So a, as Jennifer mentioned, the, the audit was expected to start, or we were expected to turn over the trial balance in November. It took us a little bit longer. We got to, actually a couple of weeks before the deadline to send it into the auditors and assessed where we and assessed where we were and really said, we need more time. We want these numbers that we turn over to the auditors to be in good shape. We want high quality information provided to the auditors. So we asked for that additional time to really go through and scrub things and make sure that we could provide all the materials that we needed to provide. So that brought us to the January start and the financial reports being released in March. So a little bit later, I think a lot of these things will be items that will work to our favor in the future with a new ERP system. You really are kind of reviewing all your process, making sure and changing things and updating things and approaching even the support schedules differently. A couple just responses to the items that were found during the audit. So the first one, the adjustments detected during the audit. I was happy to hear our auditors say there was some improvement there. And we continue to look for ways where we can improve this and address it so that it does not occur again. I think Jennifer pretty well covered most of the items that were found. One was related to the capital assets and the other to a very complex bond refinancing. And so one of our first focuses is to make sure that our accountants are getting continuing education and have the opportunity to get training on some of these more complex items. So that will continue. And then we, through this year's process and in on a continual basis, are looking for tools that we can put in place to remove some of that human error and really make sure that we're looking at things in a way that will catch if there is something that is missing or needs to be done or maybe needs to be corrected. So, you know, we did some very thorough year over year reviews as part of the year end process that will be is a tool we developed and can be further utilized in future years. We have some, we acknowledge we have some strengthening of communication across the agency because everybody in the agency really contributes to this in the long run. And so when it comes to capital assets especially, we will have closer communication with our our IT groups and our other groups that are responsible for these assets. And as I mentioned, that capital asset module that we implemented will be very helpful in increasing our internal controls around some of those capital asset reporting. On the single audit side, we very much want to make sure that we are providing our quarterly reports in a timely manner. Those reports are done across the agency. So it could be various program managers that are responsible for the grants. So we actually started yesterday by meeting with the right group of people from across the agency to make sure everybody's aware of what quarterly reports are are due when. So we have kind of an agency wide approach to this. We're adding to our to our procedure, you know, the quarterly reports need to be filed on time. It's just a reminder to make sure everybody's aware. But, you know, one thing that can contribute is sometimes because they're a little decentralized. They don't have all the information that they need. So this group of people that are meeting and coordinating will help with maybe being able to pull all the information needed for the quarterly reports. For example, the report that was 14 days late was the first one where they had to report expenditures. They had been filing and basically zero expenditures for a couple of times. And then the first report comes up where I have to put numbers on that and I have to learn a little bit more about how to fill out this form or how to collect that information. So this will give a little bit of a support network for everybody to be able to make sure they have the right information well enough in advance of submitting when the reports are due. We also went through and said, okay, calendar reminders on the people responsible for it as well as my team has reminders to remind them. So we've put in a number of things in place that we think will assist with this item. And then I did want to touch on the best practice recommendations. The first one's near and dear to my heart. And it's something that our team has really already identified going into the audit process this year. And will, and it makes our lives easier if we can improve upon this. So we are definitely working towards that. It is something that takes time. We can't just flip a switch and be able to put it all together the way exactly the way we want to. We're very heavily dependent on a secondary ledger that's on top, that's a project ledger essentially that's on top of our chart of accounts. And so we have to make sure that that structure in both of those ledgers works for everybody that uses them to do reporting. So it has to work for our projects office. It has to work for our budget office. It has to work for our accounting function. So there there's time and strategizing and communicating cooperation that we need to do to make sure when we make changes that they're not going to, that they're going to work for everyone essentially. So and and then we have budget in there. We have contracts in there, so we have things that may have to be moved or fixed in the system should we make changes so that the trial balance will work better with our reporting. On the second one, I've been communicating with our IT department. We have a new IT director, and this is definitely on his radar. He actually clarified that they have a third party risk assessment process in place, but it's not currently enough to cover all of our critical systems, including our financial systems. So that's one thing they're working on is to bring in the contracts for financial systems within the scope of that risk assessment process. So with that, we can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for the thorough report. Francesca, do we have any public comments?
Thank you, Chair. We have no public comments.
Okay, any member comments? Go ahead, Agnes.
First, sure. So first of all, I want to thank, you know, you and the accounting staff. I can only imagine how tough it was last year that you had to implement a new system, try to fix a lot of problems and
Agnes, could you speak into the microphone just a little bit closer?
Sure. Yeah. And and so I really want to, you know, recognize that and appreciate, you know, everybody's hard work and effort. And it's really good to hear that you are making improvements. So that's really, you know, important. So I really appreciate that. I do have a few follow up questions. The first one is, you know, I know the ERP system was implemented in a very short period of time. I remember there were some meetings talking about there's some issues there too, like especially with the contract, you know, module. And my question is, is the ERP implementation pretty much completed and in good shape? Or is still work in progress? And if it's work in progress, are we 80% there? Or can you talk about that?
Sure. So it is still a work in progress very much. So financials went live in January of 24. We are working on payroll being being put into that system and going live in July. So very
July 20
July of this year.
You don't want to mess up anybody's paycheck.
No, we do not. So that is very active right now. The the contracts, they did find that it really wasn't a contract management system. It's it's designed, the ERP is designed to do the financial side of the encumbrancing and tracking contracts and making sure that they're they're, you know, active and open, but it's not really a management of contract systems. So the contracts team is actually currently working towards moving part of their process back into the old CMS system. And then the controls that are related to that contract process will still be in the ERP system. So that's an area where, you know, we we saw this system isn't, is making it actually harder to do what needs to be done from a contract administration standpoint. And we kind of evaluated and found a solution that is two different systems, but actually should be a better way to make sure we're meeting our internal controls and using using staff time efficiently.
I think I want to add also that everything that Kim, you know, just mentioned that it is a work in progress that we're moving to CMS back for the contract management, but also for project management, the ERP, it is not a suited system. So we will have to go in, right now, our new program project management team is looking on what will be the requirements, the needs to have an actual project management system to be able to track, you know, what's the the normal three main pillars, the scope, cost, and schedule of a project. So that that's another avenue that we're going to be embarking on in the future. And it's going to be part of the subsequent conversation on the next subject. And it's all tied together. But yeah, the ERP is a very powerful system. It it's a good system. It's not the solution to all. And it's it's a ongoing process. And, you know, the team has been really, really focused on the payroll. They've been shadowing, doing shadow pay runs for half a year now, doing test runs to make sure that we, when we go live in July, it it will be all working correctly.
Okay, so the payroll system is the last major piece.
It's the last major piece. There'll also be benefits enrollment that comes a couple of months later. And there's also, I would say, smaller components that we aren't currently utilizing that we will look into and see if they make sense to bring online. And then we have a few smaller items that are already underway, which is includes a vendor portal so they can go in, outside vendors can go in and see their payments, as well as a P card module that will make our P cards basically kind of more automated, talk to the bank. And vendor access P card module
and payables are already in it.
Payables are already in there, yeah. It would just give the vendors a view of, you know, has my payment been made and those kinds of things. So and then an employee reimbursement component that is coming online. So there's still pieces that you can't, you can't, you know, you have to bite off chunks. So there's still pieces to come.
Okay. Then my other question is, I think, I know for this past year end, the the year end closing was very late, right? So what's the typical normal time to close the year in the month? Like, is there a target, a goal that you have?
The goal would be, in a perfect world, to have your audited financial statements out by the end of December. And so, I mean, you you can see, we kind of went from January to March. It took us a good three months from the the trial balance being submitted to the auditors to getting to that. So it would be fall or so and
So fall closing the year ending, end of June 30th. You think that's the reasonable?
It it always takes a number of months to get there.
Okay. How about month end closing then? How how long does it take to do that?
So our our system doesn't do, I think we kind of discussed this, but our system doesn't do a a complete month end close. So we can go back and post to previous periods, but there's a process that you can go to just to check and see what's still open and make sure that those are being addressed.
I remember we talked about that. I wasn't sure in this new system is still no hard month end closing, which is a little bit unusual, to be honest. Most places that I see, they have a hard month end close, so they know what the month looks like, right? Other than the numbers changing. So so I don't know if something that, you know, maybe need to be looked at down the road. If the monthly number can change, to me, that then the monthly reports don't always necessarily mean something, right? I mean, I just want to put it out there.
Through the chair, can I comment on that or actually ask Jennifer on that? How, what kind of risk do you think that poses?
I mean, it kind of depends on how hard that month end close. I mean, obviously, we would recommend you doing your bank reconciliation and getting your receivables and payables closed on a monthly basis. Looking at the capital assets and the time it takes to get the information from the contractors who are working on those projects and trying to be able to get that closed monthly, I think would be very challenging. So you could do, there's definitely steps you can take to get an almost full month end close that will definitely help the year end close process with capital assets may maybe being one of those outliers.
So you don't see it as an exposure? It's just as long as the controls are there, you feel comfortable?
I think you put it really well that when interim financial statements are provided to management, you will have to, in some cases, take it with a grain of salt if the finance team is not telling you that it is a true closed month, which means they can go back and make adjustments to numbers that you've already seen. So that that is the risk is that information is disseminated that isn't necessary, might not necessarily stay the same.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, member. Yes, we'll consider that in the risk assessment process.
And then just one last question. I know other members have questions too. So I'm so glad to see that you have put in all these different mechanisms to make sure that reporting will not be late in the future. So currently, is there a way so that management like yourself will know if a report is at risk of being late, like kind of alarm system so that you can take action? Maybe like the staff overloaded, right, something?
I I will say, we we do kind of check ins. And so we did know, it wasn't kind of last minute where we said we're not going to be able to meet this deadline. And so those check ins going to give you the, how are we doing? You have a PBC list and how are we doing on meeting all of those requirements? So I think as part of the process, we basically have your checklist. You know what needs to be done for year end? How are we coming on all of those things? As Jennifer mentioned, those those monthly things, the the bank recs and all of those, those are good indicators of whether you're on time and how things are going and and if there's any staff overload. So they're just being on top of the process and making sure that, you know, where things are.
Great. Well, thank you.
So my question is in relation to the capital assets data being delayed. So I'm just trying to understand, make sure I understand the underlying reason. So understanding that the ERP system was in the process of being implemented, was it a matter of the information was available and it was just a matter of trying to figure out how to extract it from the legacy system into the new system? Or was the information not tracked, complete, and then it had to be recreated in order, or not necessarily recreated, but basically corrected or updated in order to provide it to the auditor? So I'm just trying to understand the underlying reason.
I think it's almost more of a timing issue because you had the capital asset module go live and and we were working on it in September. There was, it was a challenge, but the information was put into the new system. But that kind of pushes you back. And so there's other things that basically we said were higher priority and we needed to focus on getting other things done. And so the capital asset piece became one of the last things that we put together and prepared. And so that's why it was one of the later items to the auditors. So you just had that capital asset module implementation happening at and the same time you would normally have your resources working on the year end close. And so that pushes things back.
Thank you. That was it for me.
Want to follow, Vice Chair Malina?
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you for all of the data. And if you'll allow me, I have a lot of primary questions. First, our financial system, i- is it something like Oracle Financial Cloud?
It's called Tyler Munis ERP.
Okay, thank you. Is our ERP system completely implemented now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we still, we have the financial side implemented, still have payroll and some other smaller areas to complete. So and and I would say it's always a work in progress.
Okay. And the, this is, of course, this is a fiscal audit happens every year annually. And annually, I think I understood you were expected, or at least this one, you were expecting to begin in November?
We were expecting to have basically our work ready to turn over to the auditors in November. And as I said, a couple of weeks before that, we realized that we weren't going to make it and worked with them to make sure and because we wanted to make sure we were giving them good numbers.
Is that what you expect every annually, every year, it's it's to begin in November?
I I think there was some discussions with our auditors that ideally it would be a little earlier than that.
Okay. So that's what my, I was going to ask is for the coming year, hopefully earlier than November is what the expectation would be.
Yes.
And then I think I heard you say to Agnes's question, you want to have the final report finished by December?
It, that would be ideal. I do not think we'll be quite in good enough shape to do that with this upcoming one for the fiscal year ending June 30th. And we have already scheduled our interim audit work to begin in July.
Okay. And I'm not holding you to any of these dates. I'm just curious, you know, to understand in the past, you know, what are the typical expectations? You know, in the past, how has it worked? And I'm also curious, thank you to Ms. Farr for being here. Is Davis Farr the typical contractor that that does the audit annually?
This is our second year in performing your audits. The first year was June This is our second year in performing your audits. The first year was June thirty uh twenty twenty-three. Typically, the audit for Sandag has been um on a timeframe where it starts in October with the goal of finalizing by December thirty-first of the year. And and historically, that timeline has been achieved, um maybe with a few exceptions. So that would be the goal, would be to start in October and to finish at the end of December.
Okay. And it sounds like it is pretty standard for the audit to uh the duration to be about three months, start to finish?
Yes.
It sounds like this one began in um January, ended in March. Is that what I'm understanding?
This year, yes, we began in January and finished in March, yes.
Okay. Uh so the delay due to the implementation of the ERP system, uh did that negatively impact the results?
Um did the delay negatively impact the results? It probably had a positive impact in the results, um because the Sandag finance staff was able, the reason for the delay is because they wanted more time to make sure the numbers were correct. So they were able to research and correct and make adjustments. So then by the time they gave us the trial balance and said the audit's ready to start, they felt very comfortable that the numbers were accurate. If we had started earlier, there would have probably been more auditor-detected errors in the records, and and that's not good. We want them to be able to find the errors and correct the errors before the audit starts, ideally.
Right. Well, um I I really appreciate the leeway there, right? I don't think anybody wants there to be errors or there to be a rush or, you know, for whatever reason, you know, sticking to timelines. Um not that they're arbitrary timelines, that but are, you know, timelines that are set in place for whatever reason, without any ability to have a leniency for um times where, for example, there is an ERP system that has caused delays. And so uh I do appreciate the fact that we were able to pivot a little bit, you know? And in fact, um being able to pivot does produce, you know, uh results that are um, I I don't know if more correct is the right word, but right, that that are positive and are reliable because we had that time to truly work with uh information that is reliable. So I do appreciate that, and and I don't know if there is any impact to to the agency because the report, this report is coming in March. Um I mean, I know it's May now, and we're receiving the results in Mar- in May. Um but is there an impact that this report is coming in May, when typically it comes uh many months earlier?
Um there, there is not an a a widespread impact, but it's something that we want to be very cognizant of. Um given some of the the uncertainty at the federal level, we want to do everything we can to meet all of our federal requirements. And so while our report was completed on time, it took us a little longer to file it. And so that is one area that we really will focus on and make sure that we meet next year, is that we're meeting all of those federal requirements. So um but we have um had rating agency um ratings with, you know, we had a similar situation last year, and we've had rating agencies come in and have no negative impacts to our bond ratings um with a similar situation last year. And so we really haven't seen any um impacts from like gr- grant funds or any of our bond funds.
Okay, got it. But that is, that would be the risk, is, there would be risk if we are, I guess, not on time with our audit findings or our uh annual reporting.
I would say there's some small risk there.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, and I do appreciate the leeway there. I have several more questions. Um if I'm taking too much time, let me know. Um uh and you have answered probably half of my questions already, let's see. Um the continuing education, you mentioned that. Uh can you uh help me, I mean, just for my edification, how does, how does that happen?
Well, accounting rules are always changing, so we do have to continue to um make sure all of our accountants are up to date on um changes in accounting rules. Actually, Davis Farr just did a training yesterday that a number of our staff members were able to attend. Um so we, we have a number of CPAs that are on staff, and they have continuing education requirements. So we try to make sure that they have opportunities through um Government Finance Officers Association and other um educational uh training, consultants and and that kind of thing that put out training, um just to keep up to speed on the latest and the greatest.
Good, okay. Um and then you mentioned the grant reporting team that you work with and and then working with them as far as uh helping them stay on track as far as grant reporting. You know, uh I know quite a bit about chasing reports down too. I know for me, it works, you know, when we um threaten, you know, you're going to be cut off on your funding and it's going to affect your colleagues as well. Then we get those reports turned in a little bit more timely, so that might work, just kidding. Um how how big is the team, the grant reporting team?
Um you, so really, they just started meeting yesterday, and I think when we got the people in the room yesterday, we said, oh, there there probably needs to be more people in this room. So I don't have a number for you, um just, there are grants that are managed by a number of um areas of the agency. And so we really want to make sure that we have this group in touch with each other, like I said, and and kind of cross-communication to make sure that everybody is aware of the financial requirement or the the financial and the federal requirements for the grants that they're in charge of.
And I think in this day and age, it's so very important, especially with federal grants. So um yeah, y- you know, any efforts that could be done to bolster that team even more, however it can be done, if we need more people power in that team, I absolutely would support something like that. And then um of course, communication, I love that you said that. That is, I think, the basis of all success, is um even more communication and strengthening all of the efforts towards pe- keeping people together and keeping people um uh communicating with each other, right, and on the same team. You mentioned chart of accounts. I- it, did you say that's something that's happening in the ERP system?
Yeah, your chart of accounts is kind of the structure um for where you're recording all of your different entries, and so that is built into the ERP system, yeah.
And I think you mentioned, so that that's sort of a method that you're using and and getting everybody on board to do the same. Is, are you saying that wasn't happening before?
Um fairly new to the agency, I think I I'm just hitting my one-year mark in the next week or so. So I I can't really comment on what was happening before. I I think that we can be better aware of how different people, different areas are using the information. You know, grant reporting is super important, budget versus actual reports are super important, and the financial reports are super important, and they're all reporting in a different way. So you have, we really need this structure to serve multiple purposes. So while I'd love to just go in and make it work for me and my team, we need to work with the project management office and the other teams to make sure they're going to be able to get the information that they're looking for out of it. So it's pretty complex, um and you know, sometimes you want to report payroll, sometimes you want to report that this is a planning function. Sometimes you want to be able to say, in this project, here's exactly what we spent on this consultant. So we have to make sure that all of that is, information is available and easily reportable. And so I don't think it's that it wasn't um being coordinated before. I think it's just we're in a new system, there's new reporting functions, and so you're going to pool information differently, and we have to make sure that the way you're pooling that information is going to work for these different groups and reports.
I I I think I can add to that. Um it, it's um, you know, a little bit, what Kim mentioned, the communications. But look, the right hand needs to know what the left hand is doing. And and um, you know, w- we, 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 this is going to be a recurring conversation. It could be on the Davis Farr uh audit, it could be on the sole source, it could be on another subject. We are reorganizing uh the agency. Um and and we started at the, a little bit at the top, we're not finished at all. Um but but we're also looking on activities, and you mentioned grants. W- we cannot have a group that does grant awards, grant requests, and 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 uh uh compliance with grants. I- i- it is not reasonable. And and so the 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 senior management team is having that conversation. Where is the best location to fall? Again, you know, is it under project control, some of it? Is it under finance? Is it under planning? Um but but you cannot just label grants and have everybody do, one single group do all the grants fix. So that that is an 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 item that we're focusing, and it's a recurring, recurring issue on multiple areas in the agency that's going to require restructuring. Um on the a- a- area that you ask about the risk of not reporting on time, it is a risk. Why? Because if the FDA or FHWA wants, they'll put us on a watch list. Because one day, one month, that equals to late, regardless if it's the the day or the month or the year. And I think that's where Jennifer and Courtney come in, and they're so valuable. We can have a good story of saying, well, we were only late so much, or we only missed data so much. Either you have it, or you don't have it. Either you're on time, or you're not on time. And that's a culture. And if we really, really are talking seriously about moving forward with the audit committee, with all the efforts in this agency, it's not just restructuring, it's not creating just the the guardrails, it's changing the culture. And and that is where we're trying to get, but it's going to be a journey, it's going to be an ongoing journey.
Great, thank you. Uh thank you very much for identifying uh Ms. Ramel, the specifically that thing about uh getting everybody together, communication, uh chart of accounts and and having everybody be able to get to the information that they need to get to. Um you know, I I've heard Mario say this, it's, you don't, we don't want to be in silos, and it's not our intent to sort of, you know, uh do things by, you know, it's our, you know, it's easy to do something the way we find it an easy-to-do-it way, right? But we also need to think, okay, we also need to do it easy for others. So I'm happy that you have identified, identified that um i- in this report. And of course, Mario, y- you've said it exactly right, right? It's uh there is a need in this agency to change the culture, and that's why we've brought you here. And I'm very happy to hear that that's what you're working on. Um you've said so many things that have piqued my interest, this unpredictability test, my goodness, but I'm not going to add another hour to this meeting, so I'll stop my questions there. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Chair, appreciate that. And again, wonderful job, a lot of information, you know, I've sat here. Um you know, we we hear a lot of the the roadblocks and things that have happened over the year, and the thought that came to mind, it's like, you know, uh when things are late, it's it's not the dog ate my my audit. Um this is, this is truly a kind of a Renaissance period for the agency, and really looking at some of the things that have happened in the past and how to be better in the future. And and you know, I I'm a firm believer, the the best is really before the agency as far as the product they 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 have, what they're delivering, uh the perception of the public. We can't, we don't, we can't change what the public thinks, but we can sure do our very darnedest to make sure they know that what what good good work this agency is doing and each and every individual who participates in that. Um I, all of the questions I had 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 been answered. I appreciate my colleagues for bringing such wonderful questions up. Um so I think that there's uh no more question. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
S- s- so I I, as I said, you know, I really appreciate, you know, the accounting team and what you have done. My question is, do you feel that you have enough resources, like staff and manpower and expertise in your area? Because, you know, you you are asked to do a lot, right? Uh to not just keep things, you know, going as a regular accounting finance department, but also implement new things and fix some of the past problems. I want to make sure you have enough resources to do that, yeah.
I I will say, we've been fairly lucky to um, we're we're down one position, but been been fairly well able to maintain our staffing. Um and so I I think it's just been a lot of one-offs, a lot of projects, a lot of things. And so that has been a strain on the staffing resources. Um but you know, they are roadblocks, they are things that we are moving forward on. And so we 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 think we'll get to an equilibrium um that'll be able to um give us the time to maintain what, all the things that need to be maintained, as well as do the smaller improvement projects, not the big, large ones that we've been going through between the back office system and the ERP implementation and some of these, and the payroll implementation. Some of those are all very large things that have put a little bit of, but are one-time things that have put strain on the staff.
Great, and I hope that, you know, in, if you find yourself in a situation that you feel you need more resources, you feel comfortable going to Mario or, you know, uh appropriate uh people to ask for help, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. Well, go ahead.
I I actually do think that I would like uh, when you have a little bit more time and bandwidth, to look at a month-end closing process, because as I said, I think management does rely on those monthly report, right? If the numbers are, can change, that's not a very uh shoring thing, so, thank you.
Any, any last comments? If not, we have to thank uh Ms. Travel and Ms. Farr for your time and great presentation and all the hard work that goes into to making this happen. So, thank you. I will now go to um. Were there any public comments, Francesca?
No, we had no public comments.
I think I covered that, sorry. We can go on to item number five. Uh Office of the Independent Performance Auditor, performance audit of Sandag sole-source procurement. Uh the Office of the Independent Performance Auditor will provide an update on the uh fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget and request the Audit Committee reviewer vision to the proposed, oh, is that the wrong one? Oh, okay. Sorry, just reading what's in front of me. So I'll turn the time over to Courtney.
Thank you, Chair. Again, I'm Courtney Ruby, I'm the Independent Performance Auditor. And today I am joined by my team who conducted this. We just acknowledged a minute ago that Lloyd Carter did retire on Friday. He was the Deputy Independent Performance Auditor on this audit. Michelle Ludwig, who is now the Acting Deputy Independent Performance Auditor, was the manager uh that assisted us in this. And then Michael Ryan was the Associate Independent Auditor. Um and then the entire team was involved as well in quality control. So the report has five findings, which I'll go through today, and we start with an introduction and background section. The audit is a part of the Audit Committee and Board Approved Fiscal Year Twenty-four, Twenty-five OIPA Annual Audit Plan that is risk-based, and it's based on both qualitative and quantitative factors. And we did consider this high-risk due to several audits and investigations that OIPA had presented. In March of twenty twenty-four, we issued the SR one twenty-five toll operations investigation and recommended the sole-source process be an audit in the next year's audit work plan. In October twenty twenty-four, we then did a companion audit, excuse me, a companion investigation, and found issues in relation to the twenty-eight million dollar sole-source contract award to Deloitte for the replacement back office system. Prior to that, OIPA issued two contracting audits since twenty twenty-two, and those audits identified many issues related to procurement processes, including the sole-source procurement. The issues identified included the misapplication of contracting policy and procedure, poor record-keeping, inconsistent and insufficient guidance, departmental guidance, staff lacking the knowledge and training to effectively safeguard the agency from the numerous risks that we know are inherent in public procurement. I do want to state, that is in the transmittal letter, that management at the time did respond to the first contracting audit and said that the Contract and Procurement Program is one of the agency's most essential business functions, and as such, it is management's intention to prepare a work plan that will result in operational excellence, as well as effective oversight, administration, and regulatory compliance. Once developed, that that plan would then be shared with OIPA, the Audit Committee and the Board. That plan did not happen and was not shared. So now we go to this current audit. The audit period from, was from July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Our objectives were to assess whether sole-source procurements are justified, documented, and in compliance with regulations, as well as Sandag's internal policies and procedures, determine whether Sandag staff are disproportionately awarding sole-source contracts to specific vendors, and last, identify whether any procurements not explicitly labeled as sole-source contracts are in fact sole-source in nature. This audit found the problems identified in OIPA's past reports persisted and were largely attributed to insufficient oversight throughout the process and contributed to an excessive utilization of sole-source procurements by Sandag. Our methodology included the audit evaluated potential patterns of disproportionate sole sourcing. The audit evaluated Sandex's internal controls through interviews, document reviews and process walkthroughs. And we also used a combination of random and judgmental sampling to test whether procurements were properly justified, documented and categorized. We did have a scope limitation that was due to the systems, which we've already talked about today. We had a limitation in relation to CMS, which was the contracting management system in place through December 2023. We found that the system was not configured to capture key data, including dates, procurement types and award amounts. We also had a limitation on ERP from January to June 2024 that the system was unable to run key reports by staff, contract and procurement method. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. In relation to procurement methodology, what you should know is that Sandex must follow federal, state and local regulations as well as their internal procurement policies and procedures to ensure transparency and fairness in the procurement process. So while competitive bidding is the required method for acquiring goods and services, sole source procurements are allowed in limited cases, such as when specialized needs make competition impractical or not in the public's best interest. So both FTA and Sandex have drawn a line in the sand when it comes to certain things. So before you can even begin to implement a sole source process, you have to attest to the factor that it was not due to a failure to plan or a lack of advanced planning or concerns about the amounts of assistance not being available, such as a federal grant going to run out and then you rush to try to do a procurement. Those are things that are not allowable. I'm not going to go into this in detail, but this exhibit is from the report. The key to know here is that justifications are based on funding sources. So here you see some justifications are applicable to all funding sources. Some are just for local and FTA funding sources and then some pertain to local funding sources. When we look at the Sandex contract document repositories, it goes over several systems. So I'll just walk you through this briefly. First, if you look at the Contracts Library, there was a shared drive, and this is before March 2020, where Sandex stored all contract documents, task orders and amendments in a shared drive known as the Contracts Library. And the agency staff could access that. The contract staff then also kept their working files in a shared drive. However, in March of 20... Excuse me, is that right? Yeah, March of 2020, the agency decided to move to the Contract Management System. So affectionately called CMS. And at that time, there was no plan to migrate the former documents over. So the things that were maintained on the shared drive, that was going to stay there. And then in March of 2022, this is when Sandex procures the ERP system that we've talked about prior to this. So in 2022, it is procured, it goes live in January of 2024. And this is when the agency began using the ERP system to store solicitation records, contract approvals, purchase orders and task orders. We were notified this summer when we were doing our corrective action plan update for the annual for the year that the management informed us that the ERP system is unable to fully support certain complex functions required by the agency's procurement program. So CMS and ERP will be used together to support the agency's procurement functions. CMS will manage solicitation, procurement and contract award activities, while the ERP will remain the system of record for budgeting and accounting relating to awarding contracts. So they're going to go back to the former system and a plan will be put in place then to migrate back to that. But currently, both systems would be used. Excuse me, starting, yes. The first finding is improper sole source justifications, unnecessary sole sourcing and unauthorized policy exceptions. So to determine if sole sourcing was allowable and properly justified, we reviewed 35 of 139 sole source contracts totaling 43.8 million out of 74, 74, 74.3 million respectively. Clearly, I needed to have more caffeine. Okay. We found that follow-on work not tied to the original competitive works, competitive awards. And what that means is that follow-on work, Sandex considers that to be a logical continuation or the next step of work already performed or in progress. So if you have competitively awarded that and now you need to do follow-on work, that's what that's called. And the follow-on work that we looked at was not tied to competitive awards. I'll talk more about that in a minute. We have an unnecessary use of sole source sourcing as well as an unauthorized policy exception related to blanket approval of 50 sole source contracts by email. On the first one, the follow-on work that's not tied to competitive awards, the Board Policy 16 allows sole source use based on economy and efficiency for follow-on work, only if the original work was competitively awarded. So out of the 35 that we reviewed, 23 cited economy and efficiency as a reason for sole sourcing. And of those, nine contracts, 6.7 million, were missing documentation to demonstrate that the follow-on work was actually tied to competitive awards. There wasn't any quality assurance process to ensure those documents were saved and they were unable to be located. For two other contracts, much smaller amount here, $5,386, were sole sourced for follow-on work. However, those original contracts were sole sourced. You can't sole source work from sole source. Unnecessary sole sourcing of phased work. Now, this is the other side of the coin. Now you have work that was properly competitively bid and could, part of a multi-phase work and could have been sole sourced without having to do a, go through a process. So out of here, you had 35 contracts, one out of 35 sole sourced, even though the work had previously been competitively awarded. It was, the records were not readily available. So because the staff couldn't find those records, they then had to go through the process to sole source it, but it would not have needed that. So it's unclear on the project documentation and incomplete audit trail increases the risk that staff cannot verify how past work was awarded and then this leads to extra work. The last point in this section is 11 contracts totaling 5.1 million of the 35 reviewed were approved as part of a transfer of work from expiring on-call master solicitation via a blanket approval for a time-only extension. So that is an unauthorized policy exception. So to expedite the transfer of incomplete work from open task orders, Sandex elected to open approximately 50 new task orders or standard service agreements and move the work there. It should have only been for time extension. It's unclear why the work was not finished before the on-call contract expired. The agency couldn't sufficiently explain why so much work had to be moved to new contracts. All 50 task orders included the same rationale for why the sole source was needed and it was also in draft form. It wasn't finalized. So while we looked at 11 in our sample, this applied to a larger population of 50. Sandex did not follow its procurement manual for this process by providing a single justification form for all 50. And of the 11 we reviewed, 10 were later amended to add time, cost and additional work. This chart is better reviewed in your report. But basically, it shows you that out of the 10 that were amended, nine did increase in dollar volume. So we started out with an original award of 5.1 million. We added 9.8 million and ended up at 14.9 million, almost $15 million. We have five recommendations in this section. The first one is for those nine missing contracts to document their absence in the contract file and to no longer allow follow-up work based on those contracts. Recommendation two is to revise the process to document how each contract is awarded, making sure that that contract history is clear, comprehensive, complete and readily accessible. Whoops. Recommendation three, develop a procedure to identify and document the contract award method for past projects to ensure that follow-on work is adequately validated. Recommendation four, create criteria for evaluating if sole source economy and efficiency justification is reasonable. And recommendation five, establish a protocol for policy exceptions for unforeseen circumstances. Such policy exceptions should be comprehensive. Next, we move into finding two, and this is where we get into the internal controls. So the Green Book, which is officially known as the U.S. Government Accountability Office's Standard for Internal Controls in Federal Government, outlines a framework for effective internal controls. It is referenced and used by state and local government auditors. The Green Book is built around five components that together form a strong system of internal controls. Those five components are a control, strong control environment, a risk assessment, control activities, information and communication and monitoring. We performed an in-depth review of Sandex's sole source procurement process during the audit period to assess whether control activities are designed effectively and efficiently. In addition, we surveyed key contract and procurement management staff, excuse me, project management staff to assess the consistency of knowledge around sole source procurements. We identified design errors and gaps within the process. Leadership reviews and approvals are insufficient with unclear responsibilities and no visibility into what is being assessed at each level. Knowledge gaps within groups responsible, or there were knowledge gaps within groups responsible for using sole source procurements. The exhibit in the report goes over the Sandex sole source procurement process. And as you see the steps, again, it's better to look at this in your report, but I'll just touch on a couple of things that are highlighted here in text, in red text. You have control gaps, which is a gap in the process. It's missing an internal control such as the next process steps aren't defined or we've outlined control errors. And that means that the process was not adequately designed. For example, the control is in the wrong place with the wrong person and/or an aspect of the control is undefined or incorrect. So when you are looking at this chart, if you look at number five, you'll note that the Department Director can go in and approve the non-competitive award, the sole source award, prior to any reviews by the Office of General Counsel or the Department Director of Contracting and Procurement Services or the senior leadership if it is kicked over to them to review. So basically, you have an approval process. It's approved before it's reviewed. Also, looking down at the bottom of this chart, some other control, contract staff control errors we noted was unclear. It's unclear when contract staff complete reviews for compliance with laws and policies. Scope and substance of reviews is unclear and reviews and related decisions are not recorded. So one of the items we noted as a control gap was that there's no process for obtaining funding agency approval. So according to Sandex's sole source justification form, a contract may be sole sourced if the grant or agency providing the federal funding approves the sole source. Sandex's procedures do not define when or how project managers should obtain such approval. A control error noted was the approval captured before the strategic compliance and legal reviews are completed. So I went over that. The Sandex sole source process has the Department Director authorizing use of non-competitive process prior to the reviews by the Department Director of Contracting and Procurement Services, Office of General Counsel and Senior Leadership. Another control gap is unclear roles and responsibilities for contract analysts and managers. When and how the analysts and managers are assigned to the procurement is unclear. The criteria used by analysts to evaluate sole source justifications are undefined as are steps taken to ensure the sole source is allowable and justified. Reviews conducted by contract analysts, including their findings and conclusions, are not documented. And supervisory reviews, approvals and related decisions by contract managers are also not identified or documented. Next, there was confusion on the scope, substance and sequence of leadership reviews. As I stated earlier, when we spoke to OGC, they stated its review is to ensure legal sufficiency. The scope and substance of the review is vague and OGC's internal review process is not documented. The sequence, as I said, is out of place. So the purpose and substance of the scope of both the Department Director of Contracts and Procurement Services and Senior Leadership Review is not defined as well. We have contract and project management staff lack knowledge about their responsibilities in the sole source procurement process. So as a part of our audit, we sent a survey out to contract analysts, to 10 analysts and 10 project managers. Eight analysts responded. And what we found is that the analyst survey did not consistently understand their responsibility to confirm the funding sources for the sole source procurement. So again, that's really key in the process because that's where the justification depends on what the funding source is to determine the justification. We had project managers not consistently understanding the policies and procedures governing the rationale that must be provided when justifying the use of sole source. And there's greater detail in the report. And then when project managers were asked if they understood failure to plan and lack of advanced planning, they did not. We have four recommendations in this section. The first being to evaluate if the agency's approval and review process provides an appropriate level of control. To review and update policies and procedures, to define a process for obtaining and documenting grant or permission. To define staff and management responsibilities, including OGC. To find the scope and substance and document each level of review performed and the required documentation for each review. To define the sequence of reviews and approvals to ensure strategic compliance and legal reviews occur before approval. And to evaluate and assign the appropriate level of agency approval based on dollar amount and project risk. And last, to implement steps and other controls where gaps in the process were identified. For three, once those policies and procedures have been updated, to provide training to staff to ensure they understand their roles and responsibilities and then to periodically provide refreshers. And last in this section is annual performance reviews for contracting staff and project managers should include expectations to demonstrate their knowledge and execution of their contract responsibilities with adequate professional care to ensure accuracy, completeness and compliance. Finding three is patterns of sole source awards raise concerns about preferential treatment, oversight, compliance and overuse. We found significant internal gaps in the sole source process resulting in a higher number of contracts awarded without competitive bidding. Additionally, the agency does not have the ability to capture key data to assess the use and appropriateness of sole source contracts. Also, OIPA identified concerns with staff's use of sole source process and the potential for preferential treatment of certain vendors. This shows you that the volume of contracts awarded by sole source is significantly higher than expected. In the 18-month period that we could look at from CMS, we saw that 245 sole source contract awards were executed and 18, that represents 18% of all contracts processed. In that time period, 1,389 contracts were processed. This number is significantly higher than expected for a process intended to be used only as an exception. You'll see in our recommendations that without a target, Sandex cannot evaluate if the number of contracts awarded by sole source... of contracts awarded by sole source is aligned with management as well as board expectations. So they really need to establish that baseline and then the target. We saw that governance over data being tracked in the system needs to be improved. CMS doesn't include an amendment effective date. We saw 39 different types of contracts in CMS, however, there weren't the corresponding number defined in the procurement manual, so there's things that they need to look at in data governance. We had concerns over preferential treatment among vendors as stated. Of the 62 project managers assigned to a sole source contract in CMS between July 2022 and December 2023, 12 processed for or more sole source contracts. Among them, four project managers repeatedly awarded contracts to ACOM, HNTB, Kimley-Horn, and these raised concerns about preferential treatment and a lack of competition among vendors. However, I do want to say that while these incidents highlight the potential for preferential treatment, the audit did not find preferential treatment. Sandeg's poor internal controls make it difficult to determine if such treatment occurred. Of the 19 contracts that we judgmentally selected for assessment, all 19 cited economy and efficiency as one of the justifications, thus pointing to the fact that sole source procurements may be a standard practice rather than an exception. We went further to review a sample of sole source contracts from July 2022 through December 2023 and have two examples to share with you. Sole source contract award based on a vendor recommendation without competitive review. ACOM requested its subcontractor, Shen Ryan, assume full project, assume future project, assume a future project contract despite not having been awarded an A&E on-call contract. Sandeg awarded the sole source contract. Repetitive and non-competitive agreements. Sandeg awarded Kimley-Horn four sole source contracts, two were retroactive, and two new agreements for subsequent work for two bikeway projects after the expiration of its A&E So when we look at that, we then look at what needs, controls need to be put in place. So Sandeg is missing key performance indicators, quarterly reviews of the sole source process, and reporting to leadership and the board. Sandeg has not established reasonable targets or limits, as we talked about. Develop performance measures to monitor sole source usage, define the data and information required to track progress towards established goals, and implement, implemented a quality assurance function to periodically assess the accuracy and completeness of the sole source process, and then identify opportunities for improvement. And last, institute regular reporting on sole source procurement performance to executive leadership and the board. These are significant gaps that exist in key controls necessary to effectively monitor and continuously improve and mitigate the risk of vendor favoritism and lack of competition. We have five recommendations in this section. One is to establish and document key controls for ensuring effective monitoring and continuous improvement of the sole source process, as I just went over on the former slide. Recommendation two, to identify data needed to track sole source volume and dollar amount in Sandeg's systems. Recommendation four, excuse me, three, update the procurement manual to ensure that, and define all possible contract types so they match between CMS and the procurement manual. And then recommendation four, to reconcile the contract types in CMS with those defined and configure CMS to allow only the contract types that are defined in the manual. The last recommendation here is for the Board of Directors and the Audit Committee to approve the following for inclusion in OIPA's fiscal year 2526 audit plan. The first one is to assess planned capital project outcomes for fiscal year 2526 and in December 2025 to initiate a six-month review of sole source justifications to evaluate progress. Finding four is about amendments not properly sole sourced, undefined contract limits, and misaligned policies with best practices. We judgmentally reviewed 20 of 204 contract amendments. These were labeled as, not labeled as, sole source in Sandeg's system. So 27.9 out of 29.5 is what we looked at to determine if they should have been sole sourced, and we found that two amendments should have. They exceeded the 25% threshold of the original solicitation value but were not processed as sole source procurements as required. Sandeg stated it was the responsibility of contract analysts to verify whether an amendment exceeds the 25% threshold, and a review found that contract analysts do not document their review, including findings and conclusions. The parent contracts for four amendments were missing clearly defined maximum dollar values, which are actually required. So instead, the contracts said, the contracts had, "The total agreement value shall not exceed the aggregate value of executed task orders and amendments issued under the contract in place of a monetary value." The decision to include this statement is executive management, as they are the ones who signed the contract at the time. And as I stated before, FTA states that if you have an IDIQ, an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract, you must include both a minimum and a maximum value. Without a defined contract maximum, a single vendor could receive a full solicitation value through task orders and amendments without triggering the sole source process. Sandeg's monetary thresholds for requiring amendments to be sole sourced is based on an amendment percentage change to the original solicitation value, which presents two issues. So the first is by basing thresholds on percentages only, it overlooks materiality. For example, 25% of $100,000 is $25,000, but 10% of $5 million is $500,000. If Sandeg is only reviewing amendments with dollar value changes based on percentages, Sandeg misses the potential of significant impacts. So the materiality issue is of a concern. I also want to take a moment just to have you focus on the next. The percentage is calculated from the solicitation value, not the individual contract value. If you look over to the quote on the right-hand side of the slide, FTA's best practices uses contract value rather than solicitation value to calculate the value they would consider a cardinal change. So the actual contract value that is awarded, if you make a change, it is 25% of that, then it would trigger a sole source based on federal regulations. However, Sandeg's policy utilized solicitation value instead. So if you list, if you issued an on-call A&E contract worth $500 million, had multiple vendors apply, the solicitation value is what the 25% was being calculated on. So this is just, we have a recommendation in the end to correct that situation. And with that, I'll go into the recommendations. Number one, update the policy to require contract staff evaluate and document the need to sole source contract amendments. Number two, develop a process to periodically review non-sole source contract amendments for compliance. Three, evaluate and revise policy to strengthen requirements for when amendments should be awarded, considering materiality and the original contract value. And number four, update the procurement policy to require that contracts include the maximum dollar value as required. This is the last finding. No board consent was required for high-dollar sole source contracts. So Sandeg's sole source procurement policies do not include clear sole source specific requirements for the Board of Directors' consent. Sandeg's policy procurement manual states, "Board consent in a public meeting may be required if the procurement is of the type and amount the board has directed. The staff bring it for pre-procurement and/or pre-contract approval." That is a little confusing. And then the board sets a $5 million threshold for professional services and construction solicitations, but that's not specific to sole source. There's a lack of oversight. This lack of oversight increases the risk of unchecked spending. And so you'll see, we provided several appendix in the report to assist in providing support on the recommendations. So we do have the Southern California Association of Governments policy that they use for sole source for the Board of Directors, or their, their board is called a different name. And with that, I will, this is the one recommendation, is for management to work with the board to develop a specific dollar threshold for requesting board consent prior to awarding contracts by sole source. And with that, I believe I'm handing it over to the CEO.
Thank you. Thank you to the Audit Committee and independent performance auditor for the opportunity to respond to the sole source procurement process audit. When we were doing the, the first assessment and going over this with OIPA, I did ask the very specific question, was there fraud? And the response was no. And I stand to be corrected on that, if you wish. No. So that's my first question, right? Was there anything illegal, wrong, fraudulent? And the response was no. So that was, that was a moment of, of, that puts the level of analysis to a different or reaction to a very high level, but still not to the highest level when that word comes up. So having cleared there, I sincerely appreciate OIPA's team has undertaken all this work and worked closely with my team and the Sandeg management team to support the recommendations that we will address the findings and ultimately strengthen the sole source policies and procedures. Sole source awards by definitions are a result of competitive procurement, and management agrees that this procurement method should be used only when there is a reasonable and justifiable business necessity that is in both Sandeg's and the public's best interest. Support by results from the, supported by the results from the audit, management will continue to examine existing processes, procedures, practices, as well as in the approval criteria to ensure sole source are being used appropriately and judiciously. Now, one thing that it is important to highlight, and I was going to highlight it in my, in my examples, you know, I really appreciate the recommendations, and, and they're going to help us, they're going to take us a long way. They're very similar to other recommendations have come up. To be quite honest, we, a lot of the things that are being recommended, they were already somewhat implemented. It helps us put in a framework. But, you know, one time, if you have a, a heart attack, they're going to check if you have a clot artery, and they're going to fix that. And, and that's what's happening right now with this discussion. But in the subsequent visits to your doctor, they're going to say, what caused that clot artery? And that's not being solely, totally discussed here. That is my job, together with the assessment of OIPA, but it's my job to, to go further than and deep, like I mentioned before, the culture change. But, but it's not just a culture change, it's so many other things, processes. And I never follow the patterns that my team gives me and responses, so I'm always all over the place. You know, and I'll give you some examples of what was discussed today. You know, a lot of the sole sources contracts were the continuation of what's called the engineer of record. And, and it's, what is that? Is the engineer that did the design and that the team wants to continue with that person who stamps the plan under the Professional Engineers Act to do the specifications, the contract documents to take it beyond to advertising. What is the systemic problem there? Well, one was that the contracting only said end design and didn't qualify, that design continued to write the specs. So they continue extending the contract to get to that point. But if you, if you go deeper than that, is that we here at Sandeg probably are not codifying our major milestones appropriately. When do we begin certain periods of a project that are codified by FTA, Federal Highways, and others of when you begin project initiation, the planning, the 10%? When do you begin the environmental document phase or project approval? That's in one bucket. And then when you do design, which is when you pick it up from 10%, from 30%, get it to 100%, but also advertise it and award it. And once you have awarded a contract, then you shut down the design phase and begin the construction phase. We don't have those milestones clearly delimited here. And therefore, that's an example of how we're going to go systematically. We're going to have to redo that whole process, and even the way that we budget projects are going to have to be changed. The recommendations set forward today to us will help us keep moving forward, and it will help us assess the deeper roots, but it will require us probably at the longer run to reinvent a lot of our processes and procedures and implode some of our, our own manuals and rebuild them again. Some of them are rescuable. Some of them will have to go and check on best practices. You know, I don't want to make this meeting longer than what it should, but somebody asked me my assessment of what, what did I thought had happened here? And look, the, the agency around 2006, and I might not have the right dates, became a consolidated agency. From being a planning agency, an MPO like SCAC, we became a SCAC in a metro, which is, metro is the one that implements projects. And, and so like the example of looking at sole sourcing from SCAC, well, it may apply for planning projects, but it won't apply for capital projects because SCAC doesn't do capital project, but Metro does. So, so we became one of those few agencies in the state that does planning and delivery and had many other heads. And that required the agency to build some guardrails and manuals, and they brought in, the consolidation was bringing in people from MTS, North County Transit, who were in capital. So the management at that time probably did their, to their best of their knowledge, brought up those procedures, but they did something that was good and bad. The good thing was that they brought a solid, solid team to manage the capital teams, the delivery. So those teams acted as the guardrails, together with some procedures and policies, but probably not a very robust procedures and policies, but the personnel acted as the guardrails. Fast forward, a lot of them retired, moved on, were asked to move on, whatever. And the agency focused more on long-term planning and didn't focus a lot in the core delivery teams. When I came in, and it's still, the budget for capital is 50% of this agency total budget. But when I came in, 8% of the staff was fully focused on capital. So that disconnect tells you, you know, the, some of the root challenges that we have. So, you know, the, the contracts and procurements program is one of the agency's most essential business functions, and many of the causes identified were primarily due to changes in the department's systems, the PM culture, record management, and the need for employee training regarding procurement rules and proper documentation of contracts and procurement processes. But again, we need to dig deeper, and it's in the, in the core functions. But again, we need to deep dig deeper and it's in the, in, in the core functions. Definitely one of the main areas that we need to focus is on our capital program and our A and E programs. That is why we reorganized and that the capital program was broken into three different sections and one of them, our program project management team that's going to be focusing again on, 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 checking on the scope, the schedule and the budgeting of the, of the projects and the contracts. The agency has properly taken steps to strengthen the contracting functions related to the sole source agreement. Several of the recommendations are already in progress. Currently, I personally review and approve all the sole source contracts under five mil, over five million, under $5 million, excuse me. We also submit policies and procedures related to the finance contracts and procurements and project management to the Board of Directors. These policies provide greater transparency and ensure oversight for sole source contracts by senior management. But again, we may be changing some policies, but we may have to change a, the entire procedure itself. So I wouldn't call it a Band-Aid, but I would say some of this will be mid and, and midterm fixes while we're looking at the root cause. Some of them, those will become the long-term fixes, but some may have to be, we may have to redo the entire process in the, in the change chain of, of, of approvals. Now, it was mentioned that, and that's another example, and I picked it up right now, that the Director of the Department approves something. Well, I think it's all semantics. The Director will probably not approve anything. The Director will recommend for approval. And then there will be review processes. And I think what, what Courtney is asking us is define who's the ultimate decision maker or who you're going to be asking to be the approval. And all the other ones are going to be approving or recommending approval, are going to, excuse me, recommending approval or reviewing for appropriateness. You know, staff also is working on updates on the history of the procurement form to more clearly document different contract milestones, decision points and related justifications. This is not just on sole sourcing. Our Chairwoman, Mayor Heepner, asked us to give the history of something that's when we bring in a project or an update to the board reports. You know, give that history, give what all the decisions that have been made. I think you're asking the same thing. I'll tell you an example also. I was getting Adobe Sign now is the new thing, right? We don't, we don't sign that much with ink. We sign with Adobe Sign. I was getting emails from people that I didn't even know, asking for my signature and approval. I go, no, no, no. We need to create what I call a yellow sheet process where it gives me the history, the procedures, the recommendations of approval. I think this is what you're asking for. So definitely that should be happening. You know, additional standard operating systems should be established to deal with all this. I could go on and on and on. You know, the CMS system is a good example. We discussed it on the prior item, right? We're going back to the CMS to track better the contracts. We definitely need to have a holistic lens on, on how we're going to deal with all these issues. We are working on a correction action plan and it's not just for sole source. All this is going to falls in place and is repetitive with so many other recommendations. So, you know, basically, I acknowledge, I appreciate this. And I also want to mention that this is a broader item than just sole sourcing. It, it's, it's that revamping our processes within the organization and definitely beefing up our project management section, not just our contract sections, but also our finance department and others, so they're all interconnected is helpful. And I'll leave you with one, one last piece. The Sandac personnel work very, very hard and they really love their work and they're passionate about their work. And, and they own, what our Sandac team needs is guidance. And that's what we should be providing. And this audit is providing that guidance and it falls on me to take it to the next level. But at no point this is finger pointing that, that team, the teams aren't doing their work. They're doing their work and they're really working very hard, extended hours. Now it's upon us to give them the right path and the right side of the street that we're to drive on and the right instructions to get to the right place. Thank you.
Big thanks to Mr. Ruby and Mario. Appreciate your comments as well. Francesca, do we have any public comments?
Thank you, Chair. We do have one public comment, phone number ending in 731. You can go ahead.
Hey there. There's a claim that some didn't understand the law or didn't care what the law is on grants and contracts and ethics. The why is obvious. Sandac corruption has been going on forever. The question is who? All the people who ran away, all the few who blew the whistle were either bullied or fired. So is the alleged new Sandac going to legally hold the guilty parties accountable? Does there need to be a collective lawsuit in order to get our tax dollars back? Are some of these companies going to stop getting Sandac contracts now? Because many of them were paid so well that they were able to afford a tax measure on the ballot to benefit themselves that thankfully fell. We know the political bias that existed now, or sorry, that existed before and it still exists now, that enabled these sole source contracts to begin with. That hasn't been addressed and I think it should be. Let's just be very real about the fact that we have had Democrats in control for a long time and they have sold miserably the people that they claim that they care about, which is the low-income, working-class people. They benefited the rich, the corporations, and I, I can't stand hypocrisy. I don't care who does it. I can't stand that. And I think the other concern is that the current Sandac employees that seem to lack training and answers. So much like the Tuana River, the Sandac swamp needs to be diverted and purified and all political games and backroom deals need to finally end. I'm actually going to paraphrase persistent Mayor Rebecca Jones. We need grounded governance, back to basics. And I'll add that those who supported Sand and those who never spoke up during all the corruptions need to publicly repent. And to summarize Mario's perspective, without definable goals, there can be no definable results. Please consider that in the future when you make decisions. Thank you.
That concludes the public commenters.
Thank you. Are there any member comments?
I have a couple of questions. I'll start with the item in relation to the on-call master solicitation. So these sole source contracts basically being blanket approvals, which were supposed to be to extend the time, but they were extending the time and then on the back end extending cost and other items. Based on what you saw and based on your professional judgment, did you get any indications that these contracts were being approved to systematically bypass any controls to kind of add cost and all of these other things to these particular contracts? Or did you, or do you see that as a potential risk based on these particular on-call master solicitations?
I definitely see it as a risk. It's not that we saw that anybody was trying to circumvent the system. The, as we stated, the blanket approval was an unacceptable policy exception, right? So it was a, started out as a policy exception. It was only meant to extend time. It was documented that way and then the amendments occurred. So I don't think anybody tried. I think it just happened, right? But of course, again, the risk of, which I think that the resounding message I would hope from this audit is the oversight piece, right? You've got to have those checks and balances so that somebody would have managed that and said, oh, this is an exception. We need to, we need to process this, figure out how are we going to deal with exceptions, right? And then that those would have been monitored or tagged in the system in such a way that no one would have been able to add money to them.
Got it. Okay. And then a second piece to that was in terms of the, some of the sole source contracts, some indications or appearance rather of favoritism, no indications really of preferential treatment, but did any concerns come up? I, I think it's a risk of course, but did any concerns come up in regards to conflict of interest and such disclosures?
That's a great question. And I, I certainly think all of us, when we look at this, when there's a concern about preferential treatment, that conflict of interest is a natural place to go. We did not see that, you know, these are concerns in relation to the preferential treatment could have occurred. And as I stated before, the internal control environment is weak such that we don't see any evidence that would confirm that that occurred, right? And then when we talk about the conflict of interest that you're talking about, I am looking at a way to bolster the third-party, third-party transactions. So I will be bringing that forward for the approval of next year's audit plan to you all. So I have a, a plan I'd like to present to you to address the third-party transactions.
Okay. Two smaller questions.
Yes.
In regards to the data that was in the system, I know if I heard correctly, some information was missing, so it was a little bit difficult to do. There were some scope limitations, but did it come up in conversation or is the intent or is that information, is the information available regarding the status of the vendor, the sole source vendors themselves? If they are suspended, if they are on good terms? Was that information available in the system?
Member Pickney Forrest, we weren't looking at that aspect of it and that, and Mario may be able to speak to this better, but they have a compliance system that looks at, contracting would look at in relation to debarment, what the status of vendors are, but that was outside the scope of this audit.
Okay. Just as, as long as, it sounds like there's another process for, for that piece, but seeing this audit, it kind of came to mind. And then the last piece, the last question that I have is in regards to the CEO signing off now on all source, sole source contracts over a particular threshold. That process right now, is it simply you're reviewing it and then it's an email that's going out or is this part of the system where his approval has to be placed in the system and that contract can't move forward unless there's something systematically done? And then that would conclude my questions.
You want to come and give the examples? I'll tell you what my process is and then she can tell you what the documentation tracking is. The, the process is that the contracts managers have a weekly meeting with me. We go over all the requests for sole sourcing. It started since October because I flagged this as a, an issue that was happening. And we go over the reasoning, the budget, the scope. It, it was, it has been slowly, we've been tapering down because we couldn't stop projects just going flat out, right? Or stop the production of projects. So we put a fixture on the, fixed the engineer of record issue. We have been evaluating when sometimes a sole source comes. I think I'll give you an example for cash collections for the toll facilities. You know, they wanted a, a several years. I said, no, okay, we, we need to continue collecting cash. You have it for 12 months because that's the time that's going to get you to get a, a new procurement process out and that's it. So we go, we go case by case. We approve them or we do not approve them. And then I signed, there's a, a whole form where it has the history, the reasoning, the why. And then once I approve them, I don't know how you file them there, Susanna?
Right. So once we, Mario has approved and he's signed the sole source forms, we then let our contract down analyst that's working on that particular transaction. Oh, Mario has approved. Here's the form and then they could proceed with finishing their review and processing that transaction. That sole, sole source form is included when the full package is routed for approvals in our ERP system and it becomes part of the contract file.
And eventually I'll have to delegate this. I can't do all the time the sole source, but as we're moving with processes, we'll have to create some thresholds of which ones come to me or not. But this is part of the reorganization and looking at processes and procedures, which is I think part of the recommendations.
Thank you. Member Nickerson?
Okay. So thank you for the hard work. I mean, there's a lot to unpack from this audit, I have to say. But also thank you, Mario. It sounds like you started already, you know, addressing some of the sole source issue. I think meeting with your procurement director, that's a really, you know, good process. My, my questions are, I have the same question that Mario first said, you know, he, he, it's the first question came to his mind was, were there fraud, right? And then I, your answer is no, you have not found evidence of fraud? That's the, or, or you, is the system or information you have sufficient for you to make a determination or there just not enough for you to tell there is fraud or not? I, I need some clarification there.
Thank you, Member Nickerson Long. An audit and an investigation are different. So I just want to say, you know, an audit goes in to look at systemic issues. We're evaluating the sole source process, right? And what we've said is that, you know, the internal controls were weak. We have concerns and then we've made recommendations to bolster that and to firm up the system. So we didn't find evidence of fraud. We weren't doing a fraud investigation. I encourage anyone who believes that there's any concern in relation to fraud, misuse or waste or abuse to contact OIPA, O-I-P-A, at sandac.org. And then that is the proper channel for it. But this is really saying, you know, these are the systemic issues. These are the things that need to be bolstered and there's, because of the lack of controls, there's a concern that favoritism or preferential treatment could occur.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification and, and about the scope, what you did or not. Okay. Another question I have is, I think you made a comment, maybe I, just to make sure I heard you correctly, because there's a lot of new things to be implemented. And you did say something about in the next six months, OIPA will do more review on that. Make sure that all the recommendations are implemented and things are on track, right? Before you go to another area.
So we are making a recommendation in the audit on to follow on audit work that will, I'm recommending that the board and audit committee look at to putting in the audit work plan. One would be in December to go in and look at the sole source justification process and then be able to assess and provide back to you all in the administration their progress on that. And then the other is to look at outcomes in relation to projects and how that is being done. So that would be both sole source and regular competitive contracts, but really understanding are outcomes being properly tracked and managed effectively? We would have more detail as far as, once we do pre-planning and stuff to bring the scope in on that. But it is really to say how, these are potential areas based on the work that we did, we think we should do, follow-up work on.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Just one more minor comments, you know? Hopefully there won't be that many sole source transactions in the future, but I've seen organizations that they reset different level of, you know, dollars amount that requires, you know, different levels of approval, right? Because I don't want Mario to spend a lot of time approving from very small item that may not be very high risk. So just my recommendations.
I agree wholeheartedly. And we, as Mario stated, that recommendation is in there to look at the approval levels and really determine based on risk and dollar amount where Mario should be and where he's going to set up his other approval levels.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Vice Chair, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for all of the information and also Mario for really your frank approach to what, what we, you know, the issues that we have at hand and your plan for how to move forward. It's refreshing to hear you say, you know, perhaps we do have to toss the manual out the window and, you know, start fresh. A couple of questions. First, I drew all over my notes. What did I do here? Can you help me understand the contract value versus the solicitation value?
Sure.
Courtney, I think I understood perhaps the solicitation value tends to be higher than the contract value?
So when an on-call ANE is put out, it can be for the project. And I think that there's some, might be some changes afoot in this as well. So if you are putting it out for the project, then it will be, task orders will be initiated to do certain aspects of it. And those task orders can be awarded based on geography, based on specification. But the, what the control is, is to say, if I'm doing a contract for a hundred thousand and then I come and I get awarded $30,000 more of work, you know, follow-on work that is needed, it is, it is a sole source, right? You are in the process. It isn't a sole source. It needs to be documented as such. However, if that's for my, that's on my task order, that's on the contract value. So I think it just may have been a misinterpretation. Again, I don't think there, there was any intent in this. So why we're clarifying it is, is because you want, we want to make sure that you capture that, that you are truly using the intent of the control and making sure that you're documenting things that are in the realm of sole source appropriately and then documenting that with accountability and transparency.
Okay. Thank you. And then also you mentioned on slide 31, there was a mention about 39 different types of contracts. And then one of your recommendations said to actually figure out how many different contract types there are. So are you saying there's more than 39 different contract types?
Yeah, I would answer this in a more broader term. I think it goes to when you look at the, what's in the system and you look at what's in the procurement manual, is making sure what should be in there, right? So I think when we look at 39 types in CMS and we say, well, that's not in the procurement manual. And then there's also, there's ways where things weren't identified, a sole source that need to be identified. I think it's pulling back and saying, what are we really tracking here? Lock these fields down to make sure that the information we need gets in the system and then we can analyze it. So the 39 is, is given as an example. Now that management may go in and look and say, those aren't, those aren't the 39 types we want. That's not how we want to categorize it. So again, it's just evidence of the concern.
Thank you. I think that speaks back to, you know, tossing out the manual, start of, starting fresh. And then my last question, Mario, you know, Courtney identified, you know, I guess 18% of all contracts during this review period appeared, you know, it appears that there's 18% that are sole source. In, in your evaluation ever since October, since you have been approving the sole source contracts, do you have a sense maybe that percentage has decreased?
I can't answer you that directly from a percentage perspective. From a number, the, the team is telling me that now that they have to come and talk to me, the request for sole sources have gone substantially because those aren't pretty meetings. I can tell you that. And, but I think this is a little bit deeper in a long conversation that Courtney and myself had. And Courtney highlighted in her presentation three or four times that, hey, you need to have a target, right? And, and I was pushing back on Courtney, on Courtney, not to, not that I don't want to have a target. I go, you're right now are asking me to pick a number up from the air because I don't know what, we need to set up a baseline. We need to look at best practices. And, and then maybe, maybe it could be a number, maybe it could be a percentage, right? It could be a bad year with bad weather and we get, a lot of our contracts start failing in the field and we may need to have emergency contracts and those are sole source and we'll have a lot of them. So we, I think we agreed that we need to look at what other agencies are doing to set up as a bar, as a baseline and then try to set that target. So right now, I don't know percentage wise if, if we have gone down. I, I would say that we have gone down substantially. But I know, Susanna, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, wouldn't be able to give you an, we could pull the exact number because we could go back and look at the agendas of when we meet with Mario, but I think it's varied. I mean, we've canceled a couple of meetings some weeks because there's nothing that week. I would say the biggest number we had maybe was like five or six in one meeting, right? So it kind of varies. We've had weeks where there's just one. Like I said, we've had a weeks when there's been zero. So we could go back and look at the numbers if that's something that you were interested in seeing.
Well, I, I think, you know, as we continue the conversation and all of this, there is a great amount of focus on sole sourcing and the fact that it needs to be done correctly. So I don't need, you know, a response specifically to my question. I think the fact that there is a focus on doing the process correctly is going to satisfy, you know, my inquiry in the end, especially given that, the fact that Mario, you know, management's response to all of the recommendations from OIPA, all of them are management agrees. You know, management agrees that all of these recommendations need to be put in place. And there's a timeline for how to do it. So I do appreciate all of the work that is being done and all of the focus and all the effort that will get us to a better place. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Chair. And thanks to Ms. Ruby and to Mario. This great presentation. We know it was delayed a little bit. We canceled a couple of meetings and had to have a special meeting, but this is important information for, for, not only for the audit committee, but for the, the public. And obviously the board will have their opportunity to hear some of this and understand a little bit more. You know, I wrote down some notes and I heard a lot of phrases repeated and similar phrases repeated. Need for internal controls, undefined process, not documented, not identified, lack of knowledge. But ultimately it came down to the fact there was no preferential treatment found, nothing that was illegal, perhaps things that made a workflow easy for an individual, made the project move a little bit faster, maybe just making it more comfortable to, to get the work done for somebody they know. But then I think that's, that's an important part of, of the findings of this audit. Is it, we recognize there are some shortcomings. Vice Chair Melina, I think, and I were laughing, we came onto Sandag at the same time and the previous audit from OIPA, there was a lot of, management does not agree, a lot of that. And, and it created for, for young members of the Sandag board, a lot of confusion like, oh my goodness, where, where is this going? And I think that we see kind of the product out. And so the fact that management is in agreement and has already started the process is very encouraging and it shows a lot to the base of, of, of the agency. Because at the top of the agency, you have somebody who is doing the right thing. And I think that the directors and all the other people under it, all the way to the, to the, the bottom, I guess, the new people in the agency realize that it's an important part. You know, I wrote down here and, you know, the ease of the workflow is not greater than the fiduciary responsibility and adding process and procedure to equal, you know, big public trust for us. And it's just doing the right thing. We all work to do the right thing. Sometimes it's hard to, and not because we don't innately feel like we want to do the right thing, but perhaps there's barriers, you know? We, we've all grown up with watching cartoons where you're faced with the decision, you have the angel pop up and the devil on the other and trying to figure out what the right thing to do is. And, and as we go forth, I think that what I'm hearing is staff's not afraid to put the work in. You know, back when ERP came out, I was talking to some staff members and they're like, oh, we're doing our regular work, plus doing this implementation. And, and for any, any individual, any agency, any business to say, hey, we're going to do the regular, which is heavy and complicated. Oh, and we're going to implement these new systems simultaneously and we're going to double the workflow. I heard payroll's been, you know, shadowed for six months. Payroll in any industry, doing it once is hard enough, but to, to put into systems. So I, again, I, I'm very optimistic and I feel a sincere gratitude to staff from the OIPA, all the, all the other staff, the CEO, for, for really putting the best foot forward and doing the right thing. I know that as, as board members, we, we're going to, you know, we, I think we, Vice Chair Melina, we already kind of know what some of the board members are going to think. And it's true, we're, the whole idea isn't to point fingers or to get somebody. If there was any print propriety, I think we all agree that they, there should be some corrective action, whether that includes termination or, or legal action. I think we'd all include, agree that that's important. But from the findings, I, I don't think that's going to happen. And I think that, you know, for me, the board needs to understand that a lot of work went into this. A lot of work. It is, we went through it and I think less than an hour or so, I can't even imagine, you know, I, my, my profession is I'm a chef. And there's times we spend hours and hours making these meals and it's all done in 20 minutes. And so I understand, you know, you look back and like, you know, the dust settles, you move on to the next thing. But I think this, this document will, will serve as a guidebook to move the agency forward cohesively and in the right direction. So I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. And that's kind of my comments. Are there any other comments? Okay. Francesca, we don't have any non, continued non-agenda public comments, do we?
No, we do not, Chair.
Okay. That concludes our agenda for today. Our next audit committee meeting has been canceled for June. We'll meet again on Friday, July 11th at 1:00 PM. Meeting is adjourned.